This is the first Tuesday of the month with Wapaka City Council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, and I call this meeting to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Ellen Keeland.
Here.
Scott Proczaski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Next up is the consent agenda. This is where we take each of those items that's on the consent agenda and vote on those with one motion unless council or staff would like to see any of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would consider those individually. Anybody would like to see anything move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Martin that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, regular agenda. Sandy, you have one item.
Addendum number one, a mayor's proclamation for the Wapaka 2019 Fire Prevention Week was uploaded to the city website and emailed today.
Okay, and then there were just a couple of other things that got put on our desk. One was dealing with the branding, that's that large packet, and then Mary Fair, who I think is going to talk to us at public input part about the items that she put on our desk too, so we can talk about that at that time. So with that one addition, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition and a couple of additional handouts. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation by the Historical Society for the fiscal 2020 funding, and Tracy's here tonight.
All right, good evening. My name is Tracy Behrens and I am the Director at the Wapaka Historical Society, and I have served in that role for four years now. First, I want to say thank you for your continued support of the Wapaka Historical Society and our efforts to preserve Wapaka's history. Each year, the city of Wapaka allocates funding to the Wapaka Historical Society that goes directly toward expenses associated with staff, operations, and programs. I and the Board of Directors greatly appreciate all you do for us. Thank you very much. For the fiscal year 2020 budget, the Wapaka Historical Society has requested an increase in funding to $25,000. This increase comes at a time when the Historical Society is growing, welcoming more visitors to each of our four buildings than ever before, but as our workload increases, requests from visitors for more open hours increase, and our preservation expenses increase, we need to look toward the future of the Wapaka Historical Society and focus on our mission to serve and educate the public. These additional funds in 2020 will help us accomplish this, namely increasing my part-time hours from 15 to 20 hours per week. This will enable me to complete more collections and office work, increase our open hours, grow our programs and events at all of our sites, and increase our volunteer base. Your support each year helps us maintain, staff, and preserve our four historic buildings, grounds, and collections. The Holly History and Genealogy Center continues to be a valuable resource for local and family research and offers exhibits focused on Wapaka's past. The Holly Center is open three days a week, four during the summer, and provides monthly programs on a variety of topics, including in 2019, World War I, Whispering Pines Park, A.J. Holly and Sons, and local musician Eddie Hanson. This last year, the Holly Center welcomed more families and children than ever before, encouraging us to set up a children's area through a Wapaka Rotary Grant with learning tools and activities for all ages. The Hutchinson House Museum in South Park and the Wapaka Depot on Oak Street are open weekends from Memorial Day to Labor Day. They are also open during city and local events, and each fall, we welcome Wapaka's fourth grade classes to the Hutchinson House, and actually, they came today. The Depot also serves the community as a unique rental space and location for several programs, including one we host with Wapaka Public Library. The Depot has also added new video cameras this year to allow year-round and worldwide viewing of the trains at the website Virtual Rail Fan, and new visitors have come to the Depot this year simply from seeing those videos online. A large part of what we do is collect and preserve the history of the city of Wapaka and the Chana Lakes area. In 2019, we have received hundreds of object donations. Ninety percent of what we collect and preserve is from the city of Wapaka. As the history of Wapaka and the Chana Lakes are intertwined, we've also made efforts to collect and preserve more history of the Chana Lakes and its surrounding townships. These objects are either exhibited at our four buildings or stored according to museum standards at the Holly History Center. Part of our mission is also education and promoting awareness of Wapaka's history. Our role in the community has continued to grow. As I serve on multiple city committees, I serve on the Plan Commission, and offer advice and historic information when requested. I am also a member of the Wapaka Arts Area Arts and Cultural Network, which the city has worked closely with in instituting the Wapaka Cultural Plan in 2018. The Wapaka Historical Society also regularly collaborates and works with other local organizations such as the library, Winchester Academy, schools, churches, and other local businesses. We have increased our fundraising as well. We have hosted brat fries and a Fourth of July food stand, sold refreshments at various city events, and even had a food booth at Arts on the Square this year. We also raise money through our building rentals, individual and business memberships, and program sponsorships. We are deeply grateful for the community and the local business support here in Wapaka. We do all of this work with one part-time director and a core of wonderful volunteers and board members. Everything we are able to accomplish at the Wapaka Historical Society is because of the dedication of our volunteers, the community, and the city of Wapaka. Our organization exists to preserve Wapaka's rich and ever-changing history and to share this history with our residents and our visitors. As we grow as an organization and reach greater audiences, we struggle to do all that we want to do: more open hours, increased programming, and more involvement in our schools and in our community. With an increase in city funding to the Wapaka Historical Society, we will continue and expand our well-attended programs and events, focus on the maintenance and improvements on all four of our buildings, reach out to partner with our community, and offer more research assistance to the community and visitors. But this is the Wapaka Historical Society's mission: to preserve our city's history, make it available to everyone, and continue to grow as an organization and as a community resource. An increase in funds will go directly to preserving our history and also engaging our community and visitors in this history. The Wapaka Historical Society is not only ready to grow, to take on these new challenges, but also excited to see more of Wapaka involved in this future. Thank you again for your ongoing support and for helping us to preserve our city's history. It's been a pleasure working with so many of you these last four years.
Thank you, Tracy. And the process, Kathy, where?
We'll be putting their request in the budget document and giving it to council to make a decision when we do the workshop.
And that will be early November?
I believe it's the first meeting in November.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions or comments for Tracy?
Yeah, so you're asking for $20,000 more, is that right?
No. Last year, we received $16,000 for the 2019 fiscal year, so it's $9,000 more.
And is all of that just to fund five more hours a week?
No. So that additional $9,000, about $5,000 or about close to $6,000 will fund those additional hours, and part of those hours will be hopefully more open hours that we'll be able to open the Holly Center. And then the additional monies is the increased costs that we have on the preservation and restoration of the buildings. Given the storm damage we've had in the last few years, we've had to replace a furnace the last two years, so all of those are adding up. And also, we have plans that have been kind of on the back burner that we'd like to take care of as well in preserving those four buildings.
Anybody else? Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Brian.
Next up, we have a mayor's proclamation dealing with Wapaka Fire Prevention Week, and that was your addendum that you received today, and I'm going to ask Andrew Whitman to read that proclamation for us. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. So whereas the city of Wapaka, Wisconsin is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Wapaka, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year, and whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to U.S. fire departments was 4% higher in 2017 than it was in 1980, and whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Wapaka residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and whereas Wapaka's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Wapaka's residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and whereas Wapaka's residents should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors, and whereas Wapaka's residents should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night, and, excuse me. Whereas Wapaka's residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them, and whereas Wapaka's residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone, and whereas Wapaka's residents should practice using different ways out, and whereas Wapaka's residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, and whereas Wapaka's residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things, and whereas Wapaka's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the city of Wapaka, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Wapaka to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Wapaka Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. They did this October 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move back to the agenda then, and we have public input. This is for items that are related to non-agenda items, so if you would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on our agenda tonight, this would be your opportunity. Please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and please limit your time to three minutes or less. I know Mary Fair wants to, so I'll let you lead off there, Mary.
Okay. Well, I have the pleasure of announcing that our city has, is going to receive the Arts and the Community Award for 2019. That's an award that's given by Art Wisconsin, which is, that group is led up by Ann Katz. If you remember, we worked with Ann Katz. Actually, a little history to this, to us getting this award. Back in 2016, Mayor Smith, our, at that time, city administrator, the Chamber of Commerce and the Wapaka Community Arts Board met and we put on an art summit. And that involved a lot of meetings and a lot of recognizing what was needed to be done and what was needed to change, and from that, going forward then a couple of years, came our, the Art and Culture Comprehensive Plan that the city, that we came up with, with the cooperation of all of those groups, and then the city council unanimously approved that in 2017. After that, we have done so many things in our community with all of those supporting people to bring the Arts and Culture Plan to the foreground, to bring it out to the people so people knew what was going on. There's been a lot of collaboration and connectedness between the various arts groups in the community, and we're just moving forward by leaps and bounds. So it's really exciting that we're getting this award. It's going to be presented at the League of Municipality Conference, which is October 23rd to 25th, and actually, the award will be given on the 24th on that Thursday. So I think it's a real feather in our hat, and we, speaking from the Arts Board and then also as a member of the city council, I just want to thank the community for the support and for the buy-in for our moving forward with the Arts and Culture Plan that we have. So thank you, and yay, Wapaka!
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Pretty nice that we got recognized for painting our blacktop on the roads, wasn't it downtown?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. There was a lot more to it, obviously, but...
Yes, but actually, those are the visible things and, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yep, absolutely. All right, any other public input? Somebody would like to speak to the council or staff about a non-agenda item? All right, let's move on to unfinished business. This has to do with the branding study, and this is a presentation, and that is that packet that you have that's in front of you, and Terry, I'm, Terry Schultz from the Chamber is here tonight.
And I am not speaking, but I would like to introduce the speaker. Ryan Short is with Civic Brand. He is the owner and CEO of Civic Brand, and he helped lead us through this whole process. We're finally to the point that we're wrapping up the branding side of things and are trying to move forward into the wayfinding side of the study. But what we need from the council tonight is to see the presentation of what the steering committee, which was made up of about six or seven people from the city side and six or seven people from the Convention and Visitor Bureau's side, that worked on this project for eight months? Almost a year. So this wasn't taken lightly. There was a lot of effort put into it, and we'd like to move forward with it. We'd actually like to do a brand release and have a big party and celebrate it later this month, but we need your approval on that. And so we have Ryan here tonight to lead you through the process of what we went through and present the brand.
So Mayor, Council, thank you for your time on this agenda. As she mentioned, my name is Ryan, I'm with Civic Brand, and we got to work with both the city and city staff and the Chamber and CVB, as well as countless residents, business owners, stakeholders. Countless residents, business owners, and really got to become part of the community and learn a lot about the community. I'm gonna, I understand that I have 30 minutes, is that correct? I'm not going to need the whole time, but I'm going to play about an 11-minute video for you guys and then dive in deeper into some of the strategy and research that went into it so you can see all the thought process, but there's three things that I want to just point out to as you're watching the video and as you're, we're going through the strategy jargments to pay attention to, and that's, one is the idea that we're talking about a brand, not just a logo. A logo is an important part of the brand, but we're talking about the brand essence. The example I always give in the meetings, and I gave it countless times up here in the different meetings, is when people say they love the brand, the Apple brand, they're never talking about the little Apple icon, they're talking about the experience, the way it feels when you go in the store, how easy it is to use. So I would keep that in mind. The second thing is pay attention to the brand principles that's in the packet. You'll see it mentioned a lot in the video. With a community brand, it's impossible to design any one element where the committee, council, the public at large, is all going to like the exact same design element. You may like blue, you may like green, you may like red, and with the brand principles, we create brand principles that everybody can agree on, and then we design and measure against those, and that eliminates personal preference. So I think if you pay attention to that, you'll see the role that that played. And then the last is just the strategy, the brand strategy, the idea of marrying that Wapaka is a great place to visit, but it's this balance with it's a great place to visit, but it's also a great place to live. So with that, I'm going to play the video, and then I'll come back up and keep talking. Try to play the video. The city of Wapaka, Wisconsin, has a really unique opportunity right now. It's always had a really strong community, strong tourism, and beautiful natural resources, but we're at a moment in time with the downtown master plan on the horizon and this project to really shape the future of Wapaka. In a lot of community branding projects, you don't have the opportunity to address both the city branding as well as the Chamber and tourism side of things, and so this is a really great opportunity to address both and create a comprehensive brand platform that cuts across everything that the city has to communicate. It's really important on a project like this to understand that this is not just a logo or a tagline. Instead, we're creating that larger brand, and to do that properly, we need to have constant interaction with the community, making sure that we're headed in the right direction, and we understand how they're going to use these different brand elements to communicate what they want to communicate about Wapaka. Our team visited Wapaka over a number of week-long trips to the area, and during that time, we were speaking with small business owners and walked Main Street. We met with large employers and took a tour of the foundry, various arts groups and organizations, individual stakeholders. We went to city festivals, we toured the breweries, all the outdoor attractions that you have. Our team also experienced all the wonderful things that you have, doll for tourists with the Chana Lakes, the State Park, farmers' markets. We went kayaking down the river. We got to really experience the community firsthand, like a local and like a tourist. In doing that, we didn't just get to see Wapaka, but we ought to understand from you, the people that live there, what makes this place so great and why you call it home.
It's amazing that such a small town like Wapaka can have such a big, well-organized event such as this one. It's really great to see. I mean, it's just a great community of people, and local businesses, everybody is really supportive of each other, so we really enjoy it here. Being so close to such beautiful water and things to do out there, whether it's kayaking or boating, swimming, any of that, any of those things, it's really great to be so close to it. It's like, people come here to vacation and we get to live here all year round. Wapaka has a huge arts community, and they've been doing a really good job of getting the word out and bringing things to this town that really is great for the heart and soul of kids all the way up to adults. I think Wapaka is just really unique. Like, you can go anywhere and find a flea market, but Wapaka seems to always bring in, you know, they've got handmade goat soap, and the people are making pastries and breads with local, pure ingredients, and I think that's becoming a really big thing just in general, and the Wapaka community is really serving that for people. I think it's a great place. I think it's a great place for kids. It has just a ton of really family-friendly events. You can, you can bring your kids, you can have fun, and you know that you're with good people.
Interesting, a lot of people are getting away from the malls and driving this way to do boutique shopping. Appleton is one of our bigger cities close by, and it's amazing how many people every day come from the big cities to get away and do the unique kind of shopping. I think it's just stepping back from the craziness of everyday life, and you come here and you kind of just get away from it all, and it's just enough to do but not overwhelming. Or like, along here, you can eat, and there's just a perfect amount of shops where you can spend a whole day enjoying it and enjoy the water too.
I'm the third-generation farmer here. My grandparents started the farm a little over 50 years ago. For over 50 years, we've had folks coming, people that live here year-round, as well as folks that come up from Illinois and other states of the Chana Lakes area. So it's really exciting to see that, you know, it's a cultural part of Wapaka and that people see it as a landmark that they want to visit. I moved out of state for a while and I came back because there's just nothing better than being in Wapaka and have such a community that loves to share with each other and works together, and the citizens in Wapaka make other people that are visiting the area, whether it be the lakes or our farms or our restaurants, they make them feel very welcomed. And so I think that that's a unique thing about Wapaka because we are a true tourist community, and we do want to see people traveling up here and enjoying all the activities and things that we have to do in Wapaka.
Yeah, first time in Wapaka. Been through Wapaka before, but never been in Wapaka. So it's a great weather, it seems really nice, we're definitely planning on coming back, we really are. So it's been a very good trip, and this definitely, definitely is nice too. We're from Green Bay, and we came over for the week to camp at Bear Lake Campgrounds. Just needed a place close to home that was something different, and we picked Bear Lake, and my wife saw that there was art stuff going on this morning, and so we decided to take a drive over from the campground to check it out.
A big part of this process is to not just visit the community, disappear, and then have this big grand reveal, and instead, we involve members of the community throughout the entire process. We're showing designs, we're showing design elements, strategy, and getting constant feedback, making sure that we're headed in the right direction. A branding project like this is really all about unifying the community. It's not just about focusing on one element such as tourism or the Chana Lakes, but instead, it's giving them the brand tools that can assist entrepreneurs, Main Street, large employers, small employers. It's really about everybody and not just a marketing campaign for visitors. We work with the community to define brand principles, and by defining these brand principles, we're able to measure everything that's created against those. As we're evaluating the designs, it's not about what I personally like, or what the Chamber likes, or even the committee likes, but rather, which designs measure up against the brand principle, and which designs communicate what Wapaka is all about. Those brand principles give us that measuring stick.
So I mean, obviously, with nostalgia, tradition, and community, outdoors, and down-to-earth, those are all super strong right now, those are all very evident, like the second you get in Wapaka. The vibrant piece, I think, is something that there's more room to grow, not that it isn't right now, but especially with like the changes they're about to make with the downtown plan, and, you know, hopefully with this project and just all the things that are going in right now to kind of give them some momentum and make it a super vibrant place to live as well.
We also visited a number of competing areas to see what they offer both residents and tourists. The main thing that we learned by visiting these other communities is where Wapaka fits in and where Wapaka can compete in the future. While some communities are really strong on attracting residents and offer a lot of activities for those who live there, and other communities offer a lot of attractions for visitors and tourists, we think Wapaka offers that perfect balance of the two, offering a really strong community, but also plenty of tourism activities. From a design standpoint, one thing we really wanted to communicate was this idea of a new nostalgia. The community of Wapaka is a very nostalgic place where people have visited for years and generations and generations over the summer. But we're also looking to attract young, new, fresh talent to the community. We think this idea of this new nostalgia really speaks to both.
So the thought on this one has these little details, and it kind of brings in that nostalgic feel that I think we're looking for. But it's still very clean, it's strong, the colors have high contrast. So it's modern, it's fresh, but still has a nod to their history.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think you've done it in a cool way. I mean, definitely, like you said, modernized, there's this little hint of what, what was in the seal, we've carried that over. Yeah, yes, I love it. I think it hits a lot of our kind of brand principles and things we were going after.
As we're looking to create a brand platform for the city of Wapaka, we're looking to create simple designs that speak to the brand principles of the community, but that allow that logo and the designs to work with whoever's hands they're in. So if it's an arts group, or a sports group, or the city, they can take that brand, and it's consistent across everything, but they can make it unique to what they're trying to communicate.
So this is the Chamber logo, and you can kind of get the lake feel, kind of nods towards waves. And we brought in some new colors. It looks fun, inviting, like somewhere you would go on vacation. And you'll also notice that it now says Chain of Lakes instead of Wisconsin. That's gonna be a huge push for their tourism aspect, nodding to the Chain of Lakes, but also letting everyone know that Wapaka's right around the corner. I wanted to balance the chain and main with this logo. You know, it needs to be appropriate for outdoors and nature, but also makes sense for downtown. So there's a nice mix of modern fonts, but you can see the icon and the nod to the lake at the same time.
Because of this balance of a great place to live and a great place to visit, the basis of our strategy has become this idea of main and chain. So this is a series of ad concepts that is a play on the strategy and the messaging that work with the logo. And so what you'll see in a series of these, this one says dive in from the chain to main. And obviously, on the left, you've got the chain side, somebody diving into the lake, having a great time outdoors, and then somebody diving into grilled cheese or some lovely sandwich. And so again, that's that idea of chain and main. And when we say, you know, from the chain to main, it's almost like from A to Z. It's not just the chain, it's not the main, it's like, we've got everything from the chain to main. And the idea is, don't just come to the chain and visit and go home, come to the chain, but then go in and go to our restaurants, go to Main Street, go see what this town has to offer. The end result is a comprehensive brand platform. Wapaka serves a lot of different people, different ways, and a brand platform needs to support that. At the broadest level is Wapaka, the place. Within that, there is tourism, city government, and the residents. These are all unique with strategy around their specific purpose, but they also work together to create a seamless and comprehensive brand platform. We're really proud of the work that came out of this project. We feel like the branding really came from the community. This isn't, this isn't even something that we created. We were just glad to be a part of it and help bring that out of you. We're really excited to see all the things that Wapaka has in store. As the downtown plan starts to get implemented, the new branding cuts across the city, the Chamber. We're super excited to see how it gets implemented and where you guys take it from here. All right, so I did wanna dive into a couple of the strategy elements, just to shed a little bit more light on them. You saw all of these different ad mockups, and we actually, since creating these, have produced some little short bumper videos. These are super short, they're like 10 seconds. So I'll show you what the, the real versions with real stuff from Wapaka instead of these stock photos look like. So these are, these wouldn't be used back-to-back like this, these would be like bumper ads, like you'd see maybe like before YouTube video or different online things like that. And so there's a couple of these that are super short. One more. So, so as you can see on those, the, the idea with that chain to main is, there's, half of it is showing outdoor tourism-related activities, and then the other half is showing downtown or the, you live there. And so we're mixing those. So when we say dive in, diving into the lake, diving into a sandwich. When we say full of color, there's the color of flowers, and, but then there's also, you know, the colors on the new crosswalks downtown. And so that idea of balancing those is extremely important, and I'm gonna show you the research that went into those. I did wanna show, 'cause the video left off the business one there. I wanna make sure this diagram makes sense, 'cause the logos serve different purposes. There's the place, when we, when some people think of Wapaka, they're talking about just a physical place. Then there's the visitor side, that's the tourism logo. Then there's Wapaka, the actual city government. The residents that we are Wapaka brand, the way we see that working is, you know, when, when community involvement is done through, whether it's a comprehensive plan, a Parks and Rec Master Plan, anytime the community involvement or community engagement's required, having this single brand in this website where the public knows, this is where I go to participate, this is where my voice is being heard, and kind of gives them a place to be heard and a sense of pride. We do a lot of branding around those planning projects like comp plans, and we're always kind of having to start over with the comp plan, a rec plan, create this new engagement brand, and so that brand would live on for the residents. And then that businesses one, there's a whole series of those. Let me skip to that real quick. So that's the visitors, the city, the residents. With this, there's a whole series of these, there's about 10 of them. And the idea is that businesses and stores and people that make products could use them. There's a made-in, there's grown, employer, that you could actually, you know, put these on your, your packaging or a sticker on your window, just to show that local pride. And so imagine a beer can with, you know, Wapaka made, or some, you know, fresh vegetables with a sticker, Wapaka grown, or you're maybe just an employer. So it's a way for them to participate in the brand. I'm gonna go through some of these fairly quickly for the sake of time. Let me know if anybody wants me to go back to them at the end, and then we can do questions. But with the strategy, in the public meeting, we asked for, for, for what do you think of when you think of these different communities? And so we did Appleton, and you can see that, you know, it's this shopping in Fox Valley and traffic. Cedarburg was a bedroom community, quaint, historic. So we have all of these, and you really quickly start to get an idea of, you know, what they're all about. And I'm gonna go through them quickly, because I think the, the outcome is shown on this chart here. This is another way of getting at the same information, where we looked at, we asked the public, you know, where does the, where does Wapaka fit in? And so we, for nostalgia, we'd have them ranked compared to the other communities. Again, I'll go back to any of these, if anybody wants to see the detail of these at the end. But the point is really this, when we charted the competing areas, and we have on one axis, you know, is it a vibrant city, or is it a really quaint city, not vertical, on the horizontal, is this more of a place that people live or more of a place that people visit? We started to see these clusters, and we kind of saw this cluster of touristy places, and we saw this cluster of places where a lot of people live, and then we saw Wapaka kind of could own this middle, and we thought that's where that whole balance in main-to-chain strategy came in. And the idea of showing both what we have to offer from the chain standpoint as well as main. And again, when we say main and chain, that's more like a shorthand for the strategy. It doesn't literally mean just Main Street or just the Chain of Lakes, but main means everything that has to do with jobs and industry and art and culture and the city and the downtown and a place you'd live. And when we say chain, it means everything that has to do with the outdoors, travel, tradition, lakes and rivers. So this cluster up here is kind of that chain cluster, and this is main, but Wapaka, we think, has the best of both worlds. We're not gonna out-live or main Appleton, but we can, we can offer more, we can offer the, the better balance. So then we get into the implementation, and these are a bunch of things that are in, there is an implementation plan that's with the branding committee of, you know, just what are the steps to roll it out, whether it's updating city websites, stationery, all the logistical things where the brand would, would roll out. There's also some fun and interesting things, I think, that I'd wanna point out here is, you know, one, I think it is important to have a launch event to let the community see the documentary. We've been talking about possibly showing that, the documentary that you just watched at the event, having some branded apparel and stickers and things like that that people can participate in. And then we talk about that main and chain strategy. You know, there's a lot of ideas that we have in the, in the implementation plan that I won't go into at this moment, but, you know, imagine a main-to-chain shuttle. Now, this is looking way far out, but like physically bringing people from the Chain of Lakes to downtown and having that be on-brand. And so there's just a lot of ideas in there, but definitely would be happy to open this up to any questions, comments, thoughts. The brand guidelines are in there, that's more of a resource for whence the brand is adopted, of how to properly manage the brand, so designers know how to properly use the logo files, all the rules for using the logos and how to not use the logos. But yeah, thank you so much for your time, and happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Peg, go ahead.
So the library's really working towards an idea of belonging in our community, and I just wondered if there is a way that we can use this brand for the new slogan that we're pulling around, which says, "You belong in Wapaka." Is there an opportunity to somehow change that a little bit to, to make it fit what we're trying to do?
To change the what?
So, for example, where it says, "We are Wapaka," is there any way we can say, "You belong in Wapaka," and then change the logo a little bit to include some color?
Possibly. I mean, I would, I think there, for each instance, it would probably be worth looking to see, like, what are, 'cause the idea would be, that would be used with a host of different things as opposed to just the library. So looking at ways that, how could that support that, but in a way that doesn't abandon, you know, helping the other avenues?
So it really isn't a library plan? It's initiated by the library with the idea that people belong here, that it's inclusive, that we wanna be an open community? So it's really not just library, it's Wapaka, and "You belong in Wapaka" is the kind of theme we're using?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, obviously, like, first I've heard of it, but that, so a little on the spot, but yeah, I mean, we could obviously look at, you know, how could those things work together, or become, whether they work together or become the same. I think there's different avenues to explore what makes the most sense.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd just like to say, nice job. I mean, really nice, I like it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very impressive.
Thank you, yeah, we've, we wanna say thank you, too, to the community, because as we've, this has been a year-long process, four trips up here. You know, what, our creative director is gonna be participating in the triathlon, like, coming up, like, next time, he, him and his wife are big into that, they really wanna do that. And, I mean, we really have kind of, we're, we're from Dallas, Texas, and so we, we came a long way, and so we're, we've all kind of fallen in love with the community and appreciate everybody's receptiveness to us.
Question for you, Terry. So you're asking for the council to approve this study tonight. Has the Chamber, has your board approved this?
We are actually sending it out to our CBB Board of Directors tomorrow morning for their approval, but several of them are here tonight, and they've been in on the process just like the steering committee and some of the council members. So I think, I think, yes, we'll be approving it.
Okay, and so, once we approve it, I know you're talking about having a, an event, but where do we go from here?
Well, that's a good question. So once it's approved, we can actually start implementing it. So we'll be working with the city and hoping that they'll update their websites to include some of this, and all of us from the CBB side will be doing the same thing with our website and our social media, and we're hoping to get businesses, I mean, it's gonna be a long process, it's not gonna happen overnight, but we're gonna take baby steps to implement it and, and move it towards the community. So, does that answer your question?
It does. I mean, along with that, too, if I could ask, so as we talk about city government and, and the Chamber, have we tried this on some of the area businesses and what their thoughts are, too? I mean, I mean, I know that you had some people that were on your committee, but have you gone outside the committee to find out what the businesses and the community think about this?
I would just say, from all of the, they've been a part of the process, so I would say from that standpoint, we've not actually released this at this point, because in order to do that, we need the people that are paying for it, we need their approval before we can take it out to the, to the whole community.
Good.
I would just add that a number of residents, business owners, stakeholders have, the outside of the committee have very much seen all of this, been part of the process, and we've talked to them. There was no formal, like, vote with them, of course, but, you know, the engagement, our whole last trip was basically a roadshow of, of what you just saw. Where, you know, we invited the board, a number of people in this room were there, business owners, residents, so a lot of people came, saw that, we got their feedback, made some final adjustments and tweaks based on that. So it was definitely a lot of input throughout the community versus just the committee on its own.
I would like to say something. I, I'm on the steering committee, and if we remember back, this originated from the city working with the Chamber of Commerce to do a branding and wayfinding project. So we, we talked about it, we talked about it in council, city staff talked about it, whatever. It came to a vote, and we voted to go forward with this project. So this isn't, it, it shouldn't be, it's not a surprise to anybody that we're, we've done this. Now we've gotten to the point where we have the results of the year-long project, and we just need a blessing to go forward, I guess. We don't know exactly what that's, what that's all going to entail. I think there, we're getting help from Ryan, of course, on what to do, and we have some strategic planning laid out, but some of it still is, is in the works. But this is not a, this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. We voted on this, and yeah, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's not just a CBB project, it's a city. I mean, we worked together, and, you know, it was implemented Brennan, Kane, and I, and Henry worked on it, along with Mitch from our office, in order to put this all together. So I guess what we're asking is for your final blessing to say, "Yes, we approve," so that we can release it and move forward.
Good. Any other comments? Anybody wanna make a motion?
What would the motion exactly be, that we have moved to approve use of the logos?
I, that's a great question, quite honestly, but I think what, what they're looking for is for them to use- is for them to use this study to move forward with starting the branding process. And so the motion should be that, yeah, we've seen your presentation, we've seen the work you've gone through, and we think it's what we're looking for, and we approve of that. So, am I pretty close?
So that we could implement the brand, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Yep, and the brand principles.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve the brand, the results of the branding project, so that we can move forward and implement the brand.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Farron, a second by Martin, that we approve of the, of, of the branding and move forward with that. Any other discussion? I, I guess I, I need to ask you this too, Terry, that where, where is the, where's the city involved with this? I know you mentioned two of our employees that aren't even here anymore, so, I mean, I, I need to know what your expectations are of the city.
Well, I think I would probably work with Aaron, and we'd try to start implementing the brand. So that would mean working with Josh at the city level, probably for implementing it into the website and the social media from the city's side. It'll be baby steps, but it'll be a long process. So I can't say exactly what it would be, but I think we would sit down and brainstorm where we want to go and how we want to move it forward.
Okay, and you, the, the chamber is taking the lead on this?
Well, unfortunately, I, kind of got handed to me because there wasn't anybody else on city staff to do it, so it ended up in my lap.
Well, I'm sure Aaron wouldn't mind having another job.
Well, I think we'll work together. I mean, that's how it was started, and I guess I'd like to go back to that. I don't want it to be on all of my, just my shoulders, so.
Sure, I, I mean, I'm just wondering the process as we go through this. I mean, we've done so many things, I shouldn't say this, at times we've done things that we've thought were really good, and they end up on a shelf, and they get dusty, and we don't move forward with it. So, I mean, if we're going to approve this, let's, let's make sure that we, that we move forward and, and use it and, and, and work with it.
Well, and part of this, approving this process will also then start for the wayfinding part of the study. So eventually, this concept will be a part of that also, so that when the wayfinding signage goes up, this, this'll be a part of it.
Mayor, Terry and I talked a little last week, and we got into the wayfinding and the, and that part of it, and knowing that there's probably going to be signage developed and things like that, and those will be conversations in the future. I've kind of made some notes here on, on the implementation part. I'm, I'm more than happy to work with Terry and the chamber on, on taking action steps to implement this.
Okay, all right. Dave, I'm, yeah?
Is there no major cost to the city right now financially, as we plan a budget? Nothing we can really budget for?
Have we paid for it already? But we've, we've agreed to pay.
I agree with that, but as far as going forward?
Going forward, we, we have funds set aside in the hotel motel tax fund. There is a budget.
The city's share of the hotel?
City, yes.
Okay.
And eventually down the road, you, when you buy new business cards and letterhead and those types of things, we're hoping that you'll change the logo. So eventually, there'll be costs, but they would just be normal business costs.
Good. Any other comments, questions? Sandy will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Scott Pachaski?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ann Paul Mail?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
You can tell those cowboys not to show up for next Sunday's game, too.
Thank you very much. We'll keep you informed, and we'll work together and get this going.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Thank you for the presentation. All right, we're under new business now. We have a application for a temporary Class B retailer's license. This is for the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival on October 19th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m., which is at the Danes Hall. That's a retailer's license to sell beer and, and wine, or?
Wine.
Just wine? Just wine, okay. All right, and I see Carol's here. Carol, do you want to make any comments, or do you want, are you just here to see if the council approves it or not? Oh, and you have former Alder Person Dan Wolfgram here.
Rearing my ugly head.
Wow, okay.
Evening, Mayor. Well, in the spirit of collaboration, the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival wanted to collaborate with Wapaka Community Arts Board, and Alder Person Farr is also representing, and I believe, is there anyone else from your organization here this evening?
There is.
So this is a BACH festival that's being held at the Danes Hall, and they have already exhausted their two allocated wine and/or beer licenses for the year. So they've come to the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival, and we're more than happy to help quote sponsor this event. So we are joining forces together, and as I said, in the spirit of collaboration, to come forward in hopes that this can pass. Clarification, it's been a few years since I was on the council. Does the allocation run calendar year, January 1 to January 1?
It's a running year, so from the date of your license now, it'll go for a solid year.
Okay. Carol, did you have any other questions?
Aye, John.
Okay.
All right, any questions? You want to talk about the event at all?
I'll certainly hand the mic over.
Okay.
Well, thank you. My name is Gary Peters. I'm the newest member of the PAC Arts Council and quite proud of it. With, I did, did have to do a little research, but apparently the BACH, the BACH festival has been, you know, very successful and a six-year running and growing now with the Danes Hall. We find that that will be just another fantastic addition to the whole package that, that I've handed out to you, and I've given you each one of our, one of our coasters with the dates on the back that I've distributed today to the local restaurants, eateries, bars, and also offering them to leave them with the public that, that do have them. But this is a short outline, kind of what this means. It, it could have been longer, but I, I think you get the point, and I, I would guess each and every one of you are aware of it, and as a collaboration with, with these people, we would, we would hope that you would support that, because that would really round out the cultural nicety of the whole atmosphere.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any questions, comments, then they would be looking for a motion to approve. So to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I think I got Hackett, motion by Hackett. A brewer game really gets you guys moving, doesn't it? Hackett and Keeland, approve the application for the temporary Class B retailer's wine license for October 19, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. It's at the Danes Hall, and it's sponsored by the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival. Discussion?
I can't resist this. There are so many BACH-to-BACH events here that we have to vote for.
All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
I'm at the back door.
Motion carried.
It's BAC-October 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, we have consideration of an initial resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for the Gussmer Enterprises Incorporated project. This is information with respect to the job impact of the project. Oh, this will be all available to us. And Kathy, you're the, the lead on this?
I'm the lead on this.
Okay.
So the item begins on page 62 of the packet. This is a request for Gussmer to borrow, under our tax exemption, $7 million worth of industrial development revenue bonds as part of their expansion. As an outline, this is, the city is not liable for any payment on these bonds, and it does not go against any of our borrowing capacity. So they have, in the past, had an industrial revenue bond when they had the Tiff District with their last project, and that did get paid. So staff has not seen any issue with this. All of the costs involved in this issue is being covered also by Gussmer.
Christopher, do you want to say anything, or?
I'll be sure to answer questions if you have any.
Kathy, from the city's standpoint, there is, I, I mean, it doesn't hinder us from any future borrows for ourselves or anything like that?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
These are industrial revenue bonds. They are not general obligation tax bonds. They just get to use our tax exemption to get a better interest rate. So that's the reason why they're using the industrial revenue.
Okay, and we've done, you said this, but I mean, we've done this in the past for a number of industries and?
Including Gussmer.
Including Gussmer's, yeah. That's probably the most recent one.
Yes, that is, the most recent.
Okay. So we're just looking for a motion to approve, if you're okay with this?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by, was it Chestnut? I'm sorry. Chestnut to approve of Resolution Number 1438. This is an initial resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for Gussmer's Enterprises Incorporated's project. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. On the tax exemption, is that just federal and state, or how would that affect property taxes?
Doesn't affect property taxes at all.
Okay.
This is for, if somebody buys their bonds on the market, they, the interest earnings on that are exempt, or exempt for federal taxes and state taxes for that person who holds the bonds.
Okay.
It has nothing, there's no property tax involved.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions? Sorry, I was thinking about something else there. Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Scott Pachaski?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Upstain.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Kathy, thank you. Chris, thank you for coming tonight. Next up, we have a recommendation from city council to city planning commission to initiate update of the city of Wapaka 2030 comprehensive plan and zoning code rewrite. And Aaron's going to take this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. So this item has been a conversation of mine and Andrew Danes, really for the three weeks that we've been here. I've had many conversations with all of you as aldermen and alderwomen, as well as staff, and also some others. And something that has come up is this, this need for, to update our comprehensive plan. As I understand it, it has been last adopted in October of 2007. Typically, it's about a 10-year plan, so we are a couple of years out of date there, and that's the priority. And then also this, this seemingly sense of a, a little bit of urgency for a zoning code, relooking at that as, I think you guys have received material that says our zoning code was last written in the 60s or 70s, and just could be looked over for some updating. I think you guys have received something that has said, we have different options of attacking this. We can either do the comp plan first, and then the zoning code afterwards. We can do the zoning code without the comp plan, or we can do them both together, and I think the suggestion, the recommendation was to do them both together. I've had meetings with Jeff Sanders, along with Andrew Dane, and I apologize if, if you guys have heard some of this, but that is the, the route that staff would like to go. Really, we're just looking, you know, I, I have seen a, kind of a timeline that was spelled out at one point, I think because of some shifts in positions and things like that, it's kind of pushed back a little bit. We're just looking for a recommendation from city council to city planning commission, hoping that you guys are still in, in favor of initiating this and moving in the route that I just outlined. We would be looking at likely doing the comp plan through city staff, and likely using a consultant to do the zoning code rewrite, just to give you an idea of what that would look like.
And just to add to what Aaron's talking about real quick here, you know, you think about the comprehensive plan and the zoning, and it's really has not been updated truly since 2007. You think, well, that's really not that long ago. But then you start thinking about the things that have changed in that timeframe, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the, the West Fulton Street corridor, and how that will probably change in the next, well, it's going to change quickly, obviously, with Kmart closing now, too, and we need to be really proactive now in, in trying to, to make sure that if somebody is interested in those vacant areas, that we are ready for them when they want to, when they want to do something. So it is a very important project. It, it means quite a bit more work for the city planning commission than ultimately the, the council, too, but it's, it's something that we really need to, to work on, and quickly.
So the mayor piggybacked off me, I'm going to piggyback off the mayor. I do want to give kind of a proposed timeline here, and it is, just kind of a, to give you an idea, October of this year to December 2020, we think that's about the timeline it'll take. As the mayor mentioned, we look at that Fulton Street corridor, we look at what's happened to some current retail. It is possible that kind of a specific plan for those type of areas may come forward a little sooner than the December 2020, but we'll work through that as staff and city planning commission, and, and just a heads up, you may see something sooner than the full project.
So what, what we're asking, what Aaron's asking for tonight then is, is that you just authorize the city planning commission to initiate discussion on both of those, comprehensive plan and the rezoning? So we'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Hackett, that the council authorized the city planning commission to initiate update of the city of Wapaka 2030 comprehensive plan and the zoning code rewrite. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would be the sole discretion then of the planning commission to come up with a comprehensive plan, or is there going to be a more, I don't know how this is going to work, kind of involved?
Yeah, no, that's a great question.
Is it outsourced, or is it not?
Yeah, so there's kind of, it's broken down into six different tasks, the process that we're going to be rolling out, and this is, there'll be a memo that planning commission reviews, and you guys will probably see maybe at the next meeting or sometime very soon. Really, task one, project coordination, inventory and analysis. I can go through each task, but the point is, is part of it is engaging the community, having those reach-out sessions. So it won't just be a staff thing. The plan is to involve many.
And you know, of course, ultimately, it does come back to city council for final approval on all of these things. Anything else? Ready to vote? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next up is license report number 1468. There's two names on there, and we'd be looking for a motion to approve as long as they pay all their fines, if they have any, and anything that's owed to the city.
Move to approve license report number 1468.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Farr, that the council approves license report number Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We have one closed session item tonight. It will be fairly quick, Kathy, and so we'd be asking for a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we convene into closed- Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we convene in the closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mail.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachaski.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.